There is a need for an executive session at this time. Under Colorado Revised Twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parentheses four, parentheses B, "Legal Advice," Board to Conference with an Attorney for the Purpose of Receiving Legal Advice on Specific Matters. And Colorado Revised Twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parentheses four, uh, parentheses E, "Contract Negotiations," Board to Discuss Matters to Negotiate. There's will also be a discussion under five point O.
Five point one.
Motion to read on five point one, Board Action. I need a motion to move into an executive session.
So, second.
Second, is there a discussion? Okay, we will move into executive session at five. Five thirty-three. Call this meeting to order on Tuesday, June thirteenth, two thousand seventeen, at five forty-two. Uh, can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here. Here.
Here.
Here. Here. I need a motion for the approval of the minutes on May twenty-third, two thousand seventeen.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? We have a roll call, Monica.
Ms. Retella.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kimbana.
Aye.
Mr. Rola.
Aye.
Aye.
Need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Is there a discussion? Can we have roll call Monica, please?
Ms. Retella.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kimbana.
Aye.
Mr. Rola.
Aye.
Aye.
Moving on to recognition and celebrations, do you have anything, Dr. Abregal?
Um, yes, we have Ms. Miriam Mosquera, who was going to do the honors for us today.
Good evening, Board Members. Good evening, Superintendent. Today, we are going to present this award to a very, very kind person that, um, that has done this with us for this, for two years. The Commerce City U.S. Post Office is being recognized for the Second Annual Food Drive for the Hope Family Resource Center. The post office had twenty-four routes to pick up their food drive and collected over seventy-five hundred pounds of food. We had two trucks bringing the food donations from the post office to the Hope Family Resource Center. We also had over twenty volunteers that loaded, unloaded the truck, and stocked the food on the shelves. Today, we are presenting David Domingo, I mean Daniel Dominguez, the postmaster of the Commerce City Post Office.
I just want to say thank you. I mean, it's, it's something that I like to do, and I just hope I can keep doing it for the school board, and for the kids, and the community. Uh, it's just not me, it's all of the, the post office, it's all of the carriers, it's all of the rural routes, that just love to help our community. So, as long as she is willing to take the food, we're willing to give. And every May, we will present the food to the boards and to the Hope Center. So, I just want to thank you guys, and I want to thank you for everything you have done for us. And, you know, just, I hope you keep up with us, you know, because it's, it's been a joy, and it, it, it's a pleasure to be, to help the kids, and to help the community, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd also like to say, uh, thank you, Mr. Dominguez, even though you're my neighbor, but, thanks, and I see all the hard work that he's putting out, out there every day, and he, uh, not only does he do it with food, I see him shoveling the sidewalks for his neighbors, and he's always helping them, and, uh, even though he has some rough neighbors, he's still right there helping them out as the best he can. So, I would just like to say thank you, and, and I think we have a, an award, right? So, let's go down there and present the award.
I got, I got a question for you. I just want to say thank you. Um, do we have any pictures to put on the website, showing this marvelous event to the district and to the community, showing how we give it back?
We do have some pictures that we took when we were unloading and loading, and also the Latter Day Saints or the elders and missionaries, they also helped, so, we have pictures of that, and we have lots of pictures of them, and other people that were taking pictures, so I can ask them for some.
Thank you, I really appreciate it.
I know how wonderful this program is, 'cause I was housed down there, and I know all the food that comes in, and the hard work Marianne has done, and, uh, all her volunteers, and I want to thank you, because it's really hard to get people to volunteer their time, uh, for such a needy, uh, program. Thank you.
Let's go down and take a picture, and present the award.
Those are the pictures you gave me previously? We'll, we'll get together.
Thanks.
Great, if everybody could take one slight step this way, please. Looking right here, ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
I will get together with Cameron, so that we can exchange pictures, so he can put it audience. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Why did she have to tell you? Yeah.
Is there any others, Dr. Abregal?
Well, that was it, we just had one.
Okay. At this time, we will move on to audience comments, but my understanding, there is no audience comment, so, we'll bypass that. Go on to, at this time, I will open it up for, uh, the Budget Public Hearing. Is, uh, it's open to the public, if they have any questions about the budget.
So, before that, I had a quick presentation.
Oh, you have a quick presentation?
Just a highlight of what we're working on. So, you received these, but I printed out extras, see if anybody wanted them. They're not different from ours. So, tonight's the opportunity for the Board to hear public comments regarding the budget. And, so I just wanted to give a high-level overview of what's in the budget. Um, in your action items tonight, there is a resolution that will approve appropriations, and this is the legal threshold of what you set your spending at by fund. So, I've recapped it here, we have the general fund, that you'll set the resolution at sixty-five point nine million dollars, plus, we will designate reserves of ten million dollars, but those aren't spent by Board policy unless the Board approves it. So, this allows you to have the legal threshold to spend it, um, but you can't do anything until the Board, um, actually authorizes some expenditure. For example, a couple of years ago, we had, we had come before the Board to do a resolution to appropriate reserves, and we passed, and then there was a need that came up, but we couldn't use it because we hadn't set the legal threshold. So, this just sets the legal threshold. So, the general fund appropriation will be seventy-six million dollars. Our risk management is the insurance fund, and I'll go into more detail, that'll be two point four. Government-designated, the food service, athletic, fee-supported, bond redemption, and our capital reserve fund. So, a recap, the budget is our beginning fund balance plus revenues minus the expenditures equals ending fund balance. As long as the ending fund balance is zero or greater, it's considered a balanced budget by state statute. If the ending fund balance was negative, it is not balanced, and therefore illegal in the state of Colorado. In our general fund, we're estimating that our actual enrollment will decline by three students, with our funding from the School Finance Act increasing by a hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty cents per student. Here's a recap of, we're estimating our beginning fund balance to be fifteen point three six million dollars. Revenue coming in, about sixty-three point seven million dollars. We have identified expenditures of sixty-three point seven million dollars, and we are using reserves or carryover, so part of the fifteen million at the beginning, we're using two point four million. Two point two of that is, um, new curriculum and the Chromebook adoption, and two hundred thousand is the preschool programs carryover. Leaving six million dollars as undesignated, giving us the seventy-two million dollars that's appropriated. And we should probably point out that our ending reserves are estimated to be at twelve point nine million dollars for, at June thirtieth of eighteen. I wanted to analyze that fund balance, assuming we spend no additional resources, so the Board doesn't, um, make a, agree to a resolution to spend any reserves that aren't already identified in the budget. We will have a Tabor estimate of two point five. The Board policy, which is five percent of, of revenues, is three point six. Non, it's non-spendable are the stuff in the warehouse, um, type items of a hundred and seventy. We have assigned to four million dollars, this is still in question, um, so it may not be, it may not be assigned, and it may, but right now, we're planning as if it is. And then the unassigned of two point five million dollars at the end of the year. It's bringing our ending fund balance at twelve point nine a year from now.
Sandy?
Yes.
What's our fund balance right now for this, this school year?
Um, so right now, I'm estimating it to be the fifteen point three at the end of June thirtieth. We won't know the exact number until we close everything out, which takes us until about the first of September. So, we're estimating it to be that, and then using the two point four that's identified there, takes us to twelve million nine. Um, I broke out just a little more detail of the expenditures, the same, this is the same slide that we talked about two weeks ago, that estimated salaries and benefits based on the seventeen eighteen FTE and the negotiated agreements, will be forty-one point six, um, with benefits being thirteen point three million dollars. Our purchase services, supplies, and other line items are eight point seven, and then here's the Board designated reserves for the Chromebooks and the curriculum adoption. And then, this is the six million dollars for fund balance that has not been designated to anything, and again, cannot be spent until the Board designates it to be spent. So, I wanted to just talk about our other funds. We have several other funds that are separating funds, some are by legal, and some are by, um, designed to, um, separate out from the general fund. Our risk management fund is our insurance fund. The revenue comes from the general fund by a transfer. We have expenditures in here that are insurance premiums with the Colorado School District's self-insurance pool. Our rates went up about ten percent, um, for next year, and our worker comp claims also increased. Um, we are experiencing one of the highest claims, renewal claims in the pools, um, pool for this year, so most other districts were around seven, and we had a ten. So, we'll appropriate two point four, which includes the expenditures of one point seven million plus six hundred and seventy-one thousand of ending reserves. Grants, we receive, um, grants from federal, state, and local funding sources, and expenditures are salaries, benefits, purchase services, supplies, and other. We do have a capital grant, it's the best grant that's building the roof at Kearney Middle School, so that will continue into next year. Um, and we're anticipating appropriating thirteen point six million dollars, and this one always has a zero fund balance, so you always expend everything that you receive. Our food service fund, we collect all of our revenue from state and federal reimbursements from the meals that we serve, and our expenditures are the kitchen staff salaries and benefits. Food is probably the single largest expenditure, next to salaries and benefits, supplies, and other. We're appropriating three point nine million dollars, and this will leave a fund balance of only twenty-four thousand dollars for next year, so this fund is going to run very close to the edge. Athletic fund, I have addressed some questions that have been asked by the Board that I didn't know the answers to. We receive gate receipts and student fees for high school students only, so there is no student fees collected at the middle school level, and, and it is supported through a transfer from the general fund. So, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars comes from the general fund, while thirty-some thousand come from gate receipts and student fees. The expenditures are coaches' salaries and the benefits, supplies, travel, referee, uniforms, and the graduation costs, so the venue cost is built into the athletic fund. Again, this fund will appropriate seven hundred and twenty-four thousand, and we're not estimating an ending fund balance in this fund.
Does that fund also cover DU?
That is the DU cost of the venue.
And how much is the DU cost?
It was eighteen thousand one hundred dollars, I think it's on your Board agenda tonight, so I can pay the invoice. So, it's significantly less than what it has been, the food.
And that's for both schools?
Has changed, that's for both schools. Fee-supported, um, revenue comes from tuition, from whether it's before and after-school or adult ed programs, or charges for services. We have facility use fees that go into there, the print shop, um, and instructional fees. So, expenditures will be related to those programs. So, it'll be costs related to before and after-school programs, printing costs, facility use costs, um, and then instructional fees. So, again, we'll appropriate six hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and forty-seven dollars for this fund for these purposes. Our bond redemption fund, our look, our revenue stream is local property taxes, which is set by the mills that this Board will set in December. Um, when we collect those property taxes, they go towards paying your principal and interest payment on outstanding bonded debt. When you set your mill levy in December, you are actually setting your collection for another fiscal year. So, when you did this last December, you set the mill levy in order to collect enough money to make your December of twenty seventeen payment, even though it's in another fiscal year. So, you have to have enough fund balance left to cover your December payment. So, we're going to appropriate five point six million dollars, that will cover basically the December payment and June payment of seventeen and eighteen. You will have a fund balance of approximately five point six million dollars, which is designated to cover your December of twenty eighteen payment. So, that's how this fund works, it works on a calendar year, but we operate on a fiscal year, so you have some monies that roll over. Capital projects fund, we only have one, it is named the Capital Reserve Fund. Reserve can be confusing, because we talk about reserves as if, as if it's our savings account, um, but this is, in this case, it's just the name of the fund. From this, our funding source is simply from the general fund. We transferred two point two million dollars over to this fund, and, um, we're projecting expenditures of six point eight million. So, four point six of that is, is from carryover projects that aren't completed by June thirtieth of this year. The single largest one is the land, the proceeds of the land of three point five million dollars, so that is in our fund balance. So, we will appropriate six point eight million dollars, leaving us with a fund balance of zero at the end of the year. Um, I outlined the projects at the last meeting, and those have not changed, that I'm aware of. Um, to recap, staffing of FTE at all funds, in your packets from last week, there was detail by each school and department, by admin, support and tech certified and classified. So, we have eight hundred and sixty-five point eight six FTE that is built within this budget, and most of the FTE is inside the general fund. There is obviously the FTE inside the food service fund, and inside the grant fund, um, and athletic has one FTE for the director. And that's an overview of the budget, and this will open up your public hearing.
Okay, we, it's now open up to the public, if the public has any comments or questions, you can do so at this time.
Here, Mr. Serna, one four one two two, is the hundred and second place, Commerce City, Colorado. Uh, just one question. What, or what's the amount that the district receive from the tax from the marijuana to the public school system here in District fourteen?
Ms. Rotella, would you like?
The district currently does not just receive directly any resources from the marijuana tax. Um, however, for the last school year, parts of that marijuana tax did fund the state's best construction program, so build excellent schools today. So, theoretically, by getting that award, we had to apply for it, and we received it, some of those proceeds would, would qualify as being funded from marijuana, but nothing directly comes to the schools. It usually goes out to other agencies, and either you apply for grants to get the benefit of it, or they provide some type of a peripheral service to support the schools.
It's, it's just a concern, 'cause the city right now is talking about marijuana, and how much it's going to bring in for the districts in Colorado, and, but, it doesn't add up, you know, as far as, as, uh, what is coming back to the school districts. And, uh, like, I've came here before, and I asked if their letter could be sent to City Council, because they're still looking at, uh, there's some people on City Council that want zero separation from our schools, and our churches, and all that type of stuff. And, uh, they also still want to put one business one right after the other. And, uh, I think it would be great if, if they would receive a direction from you as to what you would prefer in the separation process. Uh, there's conversation right now on separating the businesses about a thousand feet, and then a thousand feet from each of our buildings, so, and they keep bringing up that it's good for education, it's good for education. Well, if districts don't really get them, and they have to apply, then it, it doesn't add up. So, if you could, you know, talk to the, the mayor, or send them a letter on how the, the Board feels about the, the separation ordinance that they want to pass for these businesses. So, that's all I had to, just curious.
Uh, just, I think we meet with the City Council on July twenty-ninth, and that would be a good issue, maybe Tim, you can write down.
Okay.
To ask that question that Mr. Serna has just asked.
'Cause it's, it's, uh, if City Council says, well, we'll get funds for, for our school system, well, it, it, it doesn't add up. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions concerning the budget? Very none, see no hands up, then I guess we'll close it at this time. We will now move on to Superintendent's, uh, report. Dr. J.
Yes, we have three reports, and one is going to be before and, uh, and after-school daycare, and my report, but I'm going to ask Sheila, if you don't, would allow me to go first, 'cause mine is very brief. So, uh, the update that I want to give the Board is that we will go in front of the State Board on Thursday, June fifteenth, at nine o'clock. This is the follow-up, remember, we did our presentation for our pathway. So, at that time, the State Board asked, uh, the district to meet with the Colorado Department of Education, and just, uh, work on the verbiage to bring the external partner beyond textbooks as one of our pathways. So, we worked with the Colorado Department of Education, we did everything that they said, uh, they've helped us as far as strengthening the verbiage, and, uh, we're going to go again in front of the State Board on Thursday, it's not a hearing, they're just going to make sure that we did what we said we were going to do, work with the Colorado Department of Education, and then they do their official vote. So, once they do their official vote, and again, we want that external pathway with beyond textbooks, if they vote, then yes, we will be okay, and we have a two-year window, but we do have to show growth within one year, and I've been working with the high school and all the other schools to make sure that they understand, especially what we were told, as far as we have to improve our attendance throughout the district. Eighty-five, eighty-six percent is no longer acceptable, we have to be overnighted, because that's what we promised them, so, uh, that's the update. Uh, people are welcome to attend, it shouldn't be a very long meeting. Uh, I'd say we have to be there at nine o'clock, and I think the officially are going to start the meeting about nine thirty, so, if you get there about nineish, you should be able to see the whole thing. Uh, and again, I just want to thank the Finance Department, because, you know, we've all been working very hard, and, and the most important thing that we want to do is present a balanced budget, and I want to thank Sandy, her department, and everyone else, because we were able to do that, and not just do that, but, uh, we went a little bit further, I think, if I'm correct, we did that, and I explained to Sandy that the Board had goals, and remember, our goals are to improve student achievement, to raise all of our schools, to, I call it a CB, uh, improvement by next year, and then performing by the year after that, so, we want to make sure that we do that, and improve academic achievement throughout all our schools. Remember, we said we wanted to improve technology, we also wanted a big emphasis on reading plans, because reading plans hurt us, and I'm learning as a Superintendent, I thought the reading plans were only for little guys, but, we actually have high school students that, you know, need help with their reading, but, uh, we, we are really focusing on that, so, hopefully, the budget will address all those things, and we'll make all those things come true for the Board. But, also, as I said, we've already ratified the contract with the classified and certified, so, I think we're a little bit ahead of schedule from last year, so, thank you, Sandy, to your department, and all the other departments that helped us do that. But, uh, that's all I have for our Board on the update. Are there any questions that you may have for me, before I pass it on to federal programs? And again, uh, you're welcome to attend, uh, Thursday, June fifteenth, at nine o'clock at the State Board. Uh, Sheila, you would be on next.
Good evening, President Rola, distinguished members of the Board, and Dr. Abregal. My name's Sheila Burke, and I'm the Director of Federal Programs here in Adams fourteen. I'm here tonight to present on our licensed before and after-school daycare program, and I have for you a folder that, um, Ms. Monica has provided to you, that has all the information for tonight's presentation. During my presentation tonight, I'm going to share with you an overview of our two thousand sixteen-seventeen school year, an overview of our staffing, an overview of our budget, our parent survey results, our program needs, the neighboring district programs, and the comparison that we did, our business plan proposal, our proposed program overview for the seventeen eighteen school year, our proposed overview of our program, proposed staffing, a proposed budget for the seventeen eighteen school year, and our purported, proposed Board of Education needs for the seventeen eighteen school year. STARS is the name of our before and after-school licensed daycare program. It stands for Students Teaming for Academic and Recreation Success, or STARS is the acronym. This is our district's licensed before and after-school daycare program, and it serves elementary school-aged children from kinder to fifth grade. Our program operates under five licenses that are monitored by the Division of Child Care through the Colorado Department of Human Services. Through our program overview, our program serves five schools currently, Alsup, Central, Dupont, Kemp, and Monaco Elementary. The hours are noted on the slide, and the staffing is listed below. The number of students we serve is based off of an average from May's data. This reflects both before and after school, or both, and our, our program currently serves students who can attend before or after, or they can attend before and after. Within our staffing, we have five site coordinators, four assistants, as one school is left open. Over an average from February to May, we took an attendance average, and we were able to serve 146 students. Before school, we had 87, after school, we had 59, and on the bottom is the breakdown. In your packet, you'll notice that I've included our job description for our site coordinators, and then our program staffing chart, which is also included in your packet. Our STARS program serves both before and after school, and we also have a 21st Century Grant called Bridges that serves our after-school program only. Some students may be in both programs or just one. On days where Bridges is not running, then our STARS licensed daycare kicks in, and that is a fee-based service. Historically, our STARS daycare and our 21st Century Bridges Grant have been supporting our before and after-school program and meeting our community needs. Our 21st Century Bridges Grant concludes June 30th with our extended grant version, otherwise it was scheduled to end in April. This funding source will no longer be available for the 17-18 school year, and we're not able to apply for another grant for two years. As we get, begin to plan for our 17-18 school year, we knew that our 21st Century Grant was concluding, and that our elementary start and end times were adjusting. To help identify our community needs with the changes, we surveyed our families in May in both our before and after-school program, as well as our 21st Century Bridges Program. In your packet, I've included the survey results from all of our families that we surveyed. The purpose of our survey was to get feedback from our families regarding their needs, their wants for our before and after-school program, and to use this information to plan for our 17-18 school year. We surveyed 100 families, and those, or we received 100 responses within our surveys. We began our survey with asking how many families would need both before, after, or care for both in our survey, and the responses are listed below. Here's part of the survey results that I included for you in your packet, so that you can see a breakdown of all the questions that we asked our families. As we did our planning, we recognized for our 17-18 school year, there were needs that we have for our before and after-school program. Those needs included but are not limited to program goals, increasing our number of participating students, increasing professional development for our staff, training our staff on a stations-based program model, and implementing the model with literacy as our focus, which will support the school day, having a budget, neutral year-end budget, and increasing our base rate or our fee. These needs, again, were determined from our surveys and from our program evaluation. Once we completed our survey, we decided that we needed to look at neighboring districts to see what do they offer. So, we contacted Denver Public Schools, we looked at Brighton 27J, Adams 12, Adams 50, and then compared that to our services here in Adams 14. What we found is that our staffing differs from theirs, ours is consistent, and theirs varies across all districts. Our hours are similar to theirs, as noted above, and our costs also vary. The prices are listed below, and Brighton 27J charges $100 per week, Adams 12 charges $85 per week, per child, Adams 50 charges $96.25 per week, and Adams 14 charges $60 per week. Our program fees are noted in our Board Policy JQ that I've included for you, and I've also tabbed the page so that you could see it, and then I highlighted it on the second page as well. Behind that, in your packet, you'll see DPS's, um, program fees that I've included, and then our neighboring districts, which was on a template that they sent to us. As our start and end times adjusted for elementary, we needed to change and adjust for our programs to meet their needs. We used our survey to capture the needs of our families and their desired wants for our before and after-school program. Below is our proposed program overview. Our program hours would be adjusted to meet the needs of our new elementary start and end times, the proposed fee that we're asking from our families, the staffing, which would be one group leader per school, which was formerly known as our site coordinator under the 21st Century Bridges Grant, our calendar staffing, and then our model would be a stations-based model. Our before and after-school programs are designed to support student achievement, to be an extension of the school day. A goal of our before and after-school programs is to increase our student achievement, and to do this, we explored several models with our team, who was here earlier but had to step out, because their families had some sporting events to attend. We looked at research and reviewed our surveys. Our team used the research of John Haiti, which I included in your packet, and his work on effect size, to determine how to meet the goal of increasing student achievement, and this, again, is included in your folder. His research viewed children from all over to determine what a positive effect size is on student achievement. This is displayed in his research through the visual or graphic organizer of a protractor, which is listed here. In the protractor, he talks about effects that have a positive impact on student achievement, and things that have a neutral effect, or things that have a negative effect. So, we used this research to determine the model that we were going to use, and on the backside, you'll notice that we have the small group, which is supportive of the stations-based model, and that it has a zone of desired effects or a positive outcome on student achievement. With that, a stations-based model is when students are arranged in small groups, we're going to use this model to support smaller to student adult ratios, and when we're differentiating. Again, I used the research from John Haiti, which is included in your packet, and then we also have a link there that I provided to you to look at stations-based models. This model will support our instructional calendar and our standards of unit of study through each of our stations, and that will be done through each of our school year with our instructional calendar. To meet our goal of increasing student achievement, we looked and reviewed our current staffing. Our proposed job descriptions for our group leaders, formerly our site coordinators under our 21st century, is being reviewed by our classified union reps. Our proposed staffing for the 17-18 school year would be having one group leader per school for a total of five, one assistant per school for a total of 10 staff members. For Hanson and Rose Hill, which currently do not have any site coordinators or group leaders or assistants there, we would look at using an outside vendor who would follow our same model, and they would receive the fees of that model. That would be through Innovation Learning. I didn't include in your packet, but I have our proposed organization chart, because this is part of the stuff that is going to be going to our union reps, as well as our proposed job description and our calendar. Our program budget proposal was prepared to meet our goal of increasing student achievement, to meet our student and family needs, as well as a year-end neutral budget. Our program is not designed for profit, rather to provide students with opportunities to grow their future and to set students up for a lifetime of success. In our budget, we have our staffing, our goal of the number of students we'd like to serve, which is 25 at each site, and our proposed fee of $75 per week. We have our staffer group leader, their salaries are estimated, because each of them are on different pay ranges, our parent medical, the health care for a total cost, which is listed on the bottom. To meet our program goals and needs, I'm proposing a fee increase of $15 per week from our families. This will allow us to meet the needs desired in our parent survey for the wants that our families are requesting, to grow our program, and to meet our goal of increasing student achievement. Our proposed fee increase will still keep our family rates below our neighboring districts, and allow us to have a more competitive program and offer more, uh, achievement for our students. In our 16-17 school year, we charged before $40 per week or $10 per day, which is a drop-in rate. In our after-school program, we charge $30 per week or $10 per day, and before and after, we charge $60 for both per week. What we're proposing for the 7, the 17-18 school year is that we charge $30 for before and keep our $10 drop-in rate, $50 after to accommodate for the adjustment in our before and start and end times, because we have more time after school, and have us a weekly rate of $75 for both before and after school, which would be an increase of $15 for our families. Our proposed program budget is as follows, would be a program fee of $75. We have a local grant that supports with the materials for our programs, and then our expenses are listed on the side. I stand before you today to request a name change to our before and after-school program, and to request a $15 fee increase. To change the name of our STARS program will help us, as we have three things in our district that are all called STARS, from our STARS Assessment to our STARS Preschool, as well as our STARS Licensed Before and After School Program, and that becomes confusing for our families, our staff, and our community. Some suggestions, when we polled our students, were to have it called Gathering Place, Miles of Smiles, Busy Bodies, Power Program, or Proud Program. I couldn't find any board policies on name changes, so I'd like to come before you for your suggestions on that, to make sure that we can change it, and for an approval of our proposed fee schedule. Any questions that you may have can be submitted to either Dr. Bregel or to Monica, and I can provide a response and be at the next board meeting to be able to share out those responses. But I'd like to thank you so much tonight for your time and for the opportunity to present in front of you.
Sheila, I have a question for you. Do we provide snacks?
We do.
For our kids?
Yep, and that's part of the work from Food Services.
Question. So, you're phasing in to be academically, I get that. Okay. Here's, and it's always been my question forever and ever. These are not teachers. Who's going to make the plans?
That would be me.
Okay.
So, as part of our time with that, we are mapping out our professional development calendar. Uh, the ladies that were here earlier today are part of that, I've already presented it, they've helped in our planning process, so they would be helping to prepare it based off of the structures that we've already implemented, so that we can sustain the program. But we would mimic it so that, um, if Unit 1 in our benchmark, reading a curriculum for elementary is on government, the first unit, then the theme for our before and after school would also be government. So, we want to make sure that it's supported, so it becomes an extension of the school day through a stations-based model.
So, it'll be like if it was government at Rose Hill, then it would be government?
Yes.
Because that's something we've always discussed, is.
It would be consistent.
Consistent.
So, I would meet with our, um, group leaders once a week. We have started that tradition, uh, when I came on board here in February. So, we've met weekly to start planning, um, to see what they're doing. I've gone out to their sites to see what structures they have, looked at the needs that they have, so that we could design what we wanted to look forward to in the next school year.
What's the length of time of your program, Ms. Burke? I mean, how long do you get, do the parents bring their students in the morning, and how long do they're in after-school, how long are you?
So, in the morning, the students would arrive at 6:30, and then they would really be released at 8:30, and our, uh, group leaders would walk them to their classrooms. Then they would pick them up again at 3:30, and then they would be released at 6:00.
Is there, have we lost students because of the Boys and Girls Club?
Um, at Central, we have, but I believe that if we build a, a competitive program, because we've looked at some of the feedback from our, um, neighboring Boys and Girls Club, that we would be able to bring our families in, and they're looking for structure, they're looking for advancement opportunities, um, and the increased fee would be able to allow us to bring vendors in. We've been working with CEU, the Colorado Center for Performing Arts, or the Denver Center for Performing Arts, excuse me, the RAC Center, so they're all looking to be able to help support us through our program, which will create more opportunities for our students that the Boys and Girls Club will not be able to offer.
One of the conveniences, when I was there, was, uh, the parents felt very safe, because their kids didn't have to leave the school. They were there, they dropped them off in the morning, and they picked them up after school. Where with the Boys and Girls, if you're not close to their building, someone would have to get them to the, the Boys and Girls.
That's correct.
I've seen quite a few of them just walk on their own.
Well, yeah, but not that.
Which you're not supposed to do, but that's a dangerous situation for your kids.
Yeah, so a lot of the parents like them being right in their school where they're, they know they're safe.
Yes.
What's, what's your plan if they don't pick them up at 6:00?
So, then our group leaders stay on-site, and then we have our policies that we follow, just like we do during our normal school hours. So, we, um, we go through and make sure that we contact everybody who's in their emergency contacts, uh, we do a home visit. If we're not able to get ahold of anybody, then we make other calls out to other agencies. But so far, we haven't had a lot of, of, of families that do that, that might be one or two, but, which is pretty rare.
Right.
Because it's licensed, they have to fill out a registration form with all that information, just like if they were in school.
Correct.
So, do we offer scholarships for multiple students, in other words, from a family? Let's say a family has four, and they can't afford, what'd you say, $30 a week, or that's 120 a week, four weeks, they're running up to $407 a month, so is there any way that we give aid to some of these parents?
We do, and it comes through our CCAP funding, um, which is part of our Medicaid. So, our families fill out their Medicaid packets when they register for the program, and if they qualify, um, CCAP will either pay for all of their funding, or they'll pay for half of it or a quarter of it. So, it depends on, um.
Their qualifications.
Right. So, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Ms. Burke.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it there?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to routine items, consent items, personnel. Uh, any motion, uh, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for personnel, uh, action. So, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to business. Policy 1.1, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for, to accept policy BIBA and BIBA dash R, revised, discussion, first reading, board members, conference, conventions, and workshops, and regulation expenses auditing.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to 1.2, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the acceptance of policy BID slash BIE dash new, discussion, first reading, school board. of policy BID slash BIE dash new, discussion, first reading, school board members, compensation expended insurance liability.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to one point three, Superintendent's recommendation, policy DJ and DJ dash R, revised, discussion, first reading, purchasing bidding policy and regulation competitive bidding policy.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call.
Aye.
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 Moving on to one point four, Superintendent's recommendation, need a motion for the accepting policy EHB dash revised, discussion, first reading, records retention.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to two point oh, resolutions. Two point one, Superintendent's recommendation, and motion for resolution number seventeen dash zero zero, uh, dash, or appropriation resolution. Mr. Archuleta?
Resolution number seventeen dash zero zero seven, Board of Education Adams County School District fourteen appropriations resolution. Whereas the Board of Education and the administrative staff of Adams County School District fourteen of Adams County and the state of Colorado has duly adopted official budgets for the ensuing fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and seventeen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, as required by law. And whereas said Board of Education will adopt in December, two thousand and seventeen, a resolution certifying the mill levy rates, which will identify the amount of money to collect from ad valorem property taxes in two thousand and eighteen. And whereas Colorado revised state statute twenty-two dash forty-four dash one, one zero provides that after school, after the adoption of the budget, the Board of Education may review and change the budget with respect to both revenues and expenditures at any time prior to January thirty-first of the fiscal year for which the budget was adopted. And whereas said Board of Education is required by law to adopt a resolution appropriating the monies to be expended during such ensuing fiscal year in each fund. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Adams County School District fourteen in Adams County and the state of Colorado that the amounts of the, in the following schedule be appropriated to each fund as specified in the adopted budget for the ensuing fiscal year beginning Ju- July one, two thousand and sixteen, and ending June thirtieth, two thousand and seventeen.
Seventeen and eighteen.
Seventeen and eighteen?
Yeah, that's their own.
General Fund sixty-five thousand nine hundred and sixty-two, four fifty-eight, general fund reserves, ten million one hundred and ninety-four, zero forty-nine, total general fund seventy-six million one hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and seven. General Fund Risk Subfund, two million four hundred and six and twenty-three dollars. Government Designated Purpose Grants Fund, thirteen million six forty-two, four sixty-two. Nutrition Service Fund, three million nine hundred and two, two hundred and fifty-seven. Athletic Special Revenue Fund, seven hundred and twenty-four thousand eight hundred and fifty-eight. Fee Supported Fund, six hundred and sixty-three thousand two hundred and forty-seven. Bond Redemption Fund, five million six hundred and forty-six, eight eighty-one. Capital Reserve Fund, six million eight hundred and ninety-two, three seventy-two. Total appropriation of all funds, one hundred and ten million thirty-four dollars, uh, excuse me, one hundred and ten million.
Thirty-four thousand.
One hundred and ten, thirty-four, six oh seven. Okay, I need a motion there.
Motion to approve?
Yeah, motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Nay.
Moving on to two point two, Superintendent's recommendation, uh, resolution number seventeen dash zero zero eight, authorizing the use of appropriate or of beginning fund balance as authorized by the Colorado statutes. Mr. Archuleta?
Resolution number seventeen dash zero zero eight, Board of Education Adams County School District fourteen, authorizing the use of a portion of beginning fund balance as authorized by Colorado statutes. Whereas Senate Bill zero three dash one forty-nine was passed in legislative year two thousand and three to amend the school district budget law to ensure that any adopted budget as of July first, two thousand and three or after shall not provide for expenditures, inter-fund transfers, or reserves in excess of available revenues and beginning fund balances. And whereas if budget includes the use of a beginning fund balance, the school district Board of Education shall adopt a resolution specifically authorizing the use of a portion of the beginning fund balance in the districts, in the school district's budget. And whereas the general risk management, nutrition services, student athletic, athletic, fee-supported, and capital projects funds budgeted expenditures for fiscal year two thousand seventeen through eighteen exceeds the anticipated revenues of twelve million six hundred and thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-six, six hundred and seventy-one thousand twenty-three, four hundred and fifty-six thousand five hundred and fifty-seven, twenty-two thousand three fifty-eight, and one hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and forty-seven, and four million six hundred and fifty-nine, three hundred and seventy-two dollars respectively. And it is necessary to balance the budget by using these funds from the beginning fund balance for general risk management, nutritional services, student athletic, fee-supported, and capital projects funds expenditures. And whereas the purpose of the expenditures is to cover current operating expenditures and carryover projects from the two thousand sixteen through two thousand seventeen budget. And whereas future budget adjustments will be recommended to the Board of Education to insu- ensure that the use of beginning fund balance in the general risk management, nutrition services, fee-supported, and capital projects fund, funds will not lead to an ongoing deficit. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of Adams County School District fourteen approves the use of the above stated amounts of the beginning general risk management, nutrition services, student athletic, fee-supported, and capital projects funds, fund balance to provide for the funding source to, for increased operating costs to be incurred in fiscal year two thousand seventeen through two thousand eighteen. Carryover projects with the provision that subsequent years' adjustments be made to ensure that a deficit will not occur in these funds.
Okay, I need a motion for the approval of resolution number seventeen dash zero zero eight, authorizing the use of a proportion of beginning fund balances as authorized by the Colorado statutes.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Moving on to three point oh, other. Three point one, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval of the selection of two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen accountability measures for Lester Arnold High School.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point two, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval for a service agreement between Vail Unified School District and Adams fourteen School District.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point three, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to purchase math calendar, teacher's kits with planning guides for grades K through five from Math in Focus.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Uh, moving on to three point four, Superintendent's recommendation, uh, I need a motion for the approval for allocation of funds to increase five, point five TAP for special ed education teachers at Lester Arnold High School.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point five, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to contract with Rocket Mount School for the Death and Charter School for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point six, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to contract with Community Reach Center to place licensed school-based therapists in all schools in Adams fourteen for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica.
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point seven, I need a, uh, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval of ATX Learning Contract for Bilingual Speech Language Pathologists for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point eight, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to contract with the Translation Links to provide interpreting and translation services for Adams fourteen School District for the two seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point nine, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to contract with the American Logicus, I think, company for incidental transportation services for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica?
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point ten, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to contract with OLA Translations to provide interpreting and translation services for Adams fourteen School District for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica?
Aye.
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 Aye. Moving on to three point eleven, Superintendent's recommendation, and a motion for the approval
to contract with Ann Ross Teacher of the Death and Hearing, or and Heart of Hearing for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point twelve, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to contract with the Ann Hastings Autologicos for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point thirteen, Superintendent's recommendation, and a motion for the approval to contract with the Josh School to provide educational and therapeutic interventions for students with autism for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point fourteen, Superintendent's recommendation, approval to contract with the Jefferson Hills to provide educational and therapeutic intervention for students with significant emotional disabilities for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica?
Aye.
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 Okay, moving on to three point fifteen, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a
motion for the approval to contract with the Dervix.
Deveraux.
Deveraux, Cleo Wallace Center to provide educational and therapeutic intervention for students with significant emotional disabilities for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point one six, Superintendent's recommendation, and a motion for the approval to contract with the Larden School to provide educational and therapeutic intervention for students with significant emotional and conjugate disabilities to the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point seventeen, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to contract with the.
Consortium.
Consortium for Technical Support with Medican Building for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point eighteen, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval
to allocation of funds to increase two point oh TAP for an additional early childhood classroom at Hanson Elementary.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, can we please have roll call, Monica?
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point nineteen, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval
to contract with the Sisnerro Learning to provide professional development for the Division of Special Education Teachers and specialized service providers for three years.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point twenty, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to contract with Kids First to provide the Adams fourteen community with outreach and Medicaid enrollment for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, grab roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
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 Moving on to three point two one, Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval of Kids First Nursing and Services Agreement for two thousand seventeen, two thousand and eighteen school year.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing none, can we have roll call, Monica, please?
Aye.
Nay.
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Moving on to three point two two, Superintendent's recommenda- recommendation, I need a motion I need a motion for the approval to contract with Denver University for high school graduates. So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion? Hearing non-craft, can we move, have roll call, Monica, please?
Ms. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Drennan?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla?
Aye.
Moving on to four point oh, uh, four point one, need to discuss, uh, the board's retreat.
We'd like to do it before the end of this school year, so.
Didn't we, didn't we discuss a day?
I don't remember. Did we discuss a date on this, Monica, already?
No. You said you would discuss it today.
What day?
That you, we would discuss it today.
Okay. Is there a day that we all could make it for retreat?
I think it's, these two work, so.
Probably have to be a date.
I think it has to go with the, the two working men.
I work every day, but I can always get off. Well, maybe we should take a look at first, how long, how many hours do we want it, or so? That way the, uh, two board members that are at work would know what day we could do it.
And where we're gonna have it.
Well, just right here, you know, so we don't have to spend money.
And the norm, Mr. Rolla, you could either do it a half day, a full day, two days, it's, it's up to you what you wanna cover and, uh, how much time you wanna spend on those items.
So.
Most important thing is give us direction for next year, how we're gonna, you know, where we're gonna be going, how we're gonna meet our goals, things like that.
We had, I had suggested possibly, um, meeting prior to Monday, the thirty-first of July, when the board was gonna be meeting with the city council.
Oh, that's right, I had forgotten that. So on the thirty-first of July, there, we're going to meet with the.
It's on Monday.
It's on a Monday, city council at six o'clock, since the council's holding it. We're at, uh, city building, six o'clock, so can we meet before that? Or that won't work. And how long do we wanna do it, though? Half a day, an hour, two hours, or do I wanna do multiple ones for an hour?
You said the June thirtieth, Monica?
July.
July. Oh, thirty-first, Monday.
I'm o- open to it.
The joint meeting with city council at six, at the city.
So we'll be over there at six.
Right. But we could meet here, or.
I'm okay with thirty-first.
For how long? Four hours?
Four hours.
Four hours, so that means we would probably start at, uh, one. One o'clock, go to five, and then take an hour, grab something to eat, and then go to, I don't know, unless the council's gonna have some food for us.
Yeah, they'll have dinner.
I don't know what their, uh, policy is.
Does that work for you, Harvist?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we'll go July thirty-first at one o'clock.
And who's gonna set the agenda for the, for the retreat?
Well, we all could, just give us suggestions and what you would like to discuss, want to be discussed, and then we can set it up from there.
If, if you send it to me, I can.
Yeah.
Make you an outline of, or whatever you need.
So just, or, we could send it to Timmy, our secretary, and then he could get with Dr. Abrego, and then.
We'll formulate the agenda and how much time you wanna spend.
Good enough?
Yeah.
Okay, so whatever ideas you want to discuss at that. Now, do we want it here in the, in the boardroom, or do we want it over there in the committee room?
Doesn't matter.
Don't matter? Okay, so we'll just have it in here, I guess.
This is good.
Okay, so that's taken care of, discussion.
What's the timeframe on the suggestions?
Uh.
By when?
July thirty-first, let's try to have it by at least the end of June. Do you have the time to meet with Dr. Abrego, Timmy?
Within the next two weeks, give us all the information so we can set up.
So just, uh, could call Timmy, or email him, or visit him for once, if you can find him at home, I don't know.
He's always bike riding.
So. Okay, then, uh, earlier we had discussions there in a, there, so, an executive session, so I need a motion, uh, to move the Board of Edu- or, uh, move the Board of Education to grant or deny the request to hear the Level Four Grievance filed by Adams fourteen Education Association.
Motion to grant it.
Service, there's a motion, second, is there a discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor then, so can we have roll call, Monica, to grant, uh, the Level Four Grievance filed by the Adams fourteen Education.
This is for at the next meeting, correct?
Right, at the next meeting.
Can I have a second?
I did. Joe.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing non-craft, roll call, Monica, please.
Ms. Archuleta?
Aye.
Mr. Drennan?
Aye.
Mrs. Keenan?
Aye.
Mr. Rolla? Aye.
Okay, then moving on to communications, uh, does the board want to participate in
the Rotary Golf Tournament on July twenty-eighth? If so, what sponsorship level? And did you get your communication here? Okay, so what level, and, and in the past, we've all, always sponsored two foursomes. So, but, uh, do we wanna continue that, or do we wanna change it, or?
I think we should participate.
Oh, yes, we should, we gotta participate, 'cause I think they give four scholarships to four of our students, not District twenty-seven J, but to District fourteen, they give four scholarships, four thousand dollars a year for four years, so that's twelve thousand dollars. And if we wouldn't participate, that'd be kinda foolish on our part.
And Mr. Rolla, I told you I'm not a golfer, but I'm willing to give it a try, I, I brought my clubs.
Okay. So we have an A and a B team.
Do you have a C team?
So, but first, uh, do we wanna sponsor two teams?
You should.
Sure, that's what we've done in the past.
Any objection? Okay, so what do we wanna, which one, we have there, the, we don't wanna do the gold sponsor, five thousand, no, we don't wanna do that, I don't think we wanna do the silver twenty-five, maybe breakfast or corporation sponsor. Uh, breakfast sponsor is one thousand dollars, the corporation sponsor is seventy, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Motion to, uh, or conversation for breakfast sponsor.
Breakfast sponsors, is everybody?
But if we're, if we done two foursomes in the past, that's fifteen hundred.
That's two thousand.
I believe there's an opportunity to only.
Breakfast sponsors, two thousand.
Um, register an additional foursome.
Hmm.
At a lower rate.
At a what?
So you would do the sponsorship level, and then you would register an additional foursome.
Oh, I see, okay.
Or the corporation one may include two foursomes.
Yeah, corporate one includes one foursome, just includes a foursome.
I can see what's most, uh, cost of it.
Okay, so we at least go with the thing, we want two foursomes and, uh, at least there's breakfast, and then whatever for an additional foursome, right? Okay, that's what we'll do. And let's see for communications here. Uh, just would like to say that, uh, we did have a foursome there, uh, at the, what was it called, the community?
Can I ask an additional question?
Yeah.
Who from the board is wanting to play on, um, at this tournament?
I mean, I'll play if, if we don't have four employees that want, or eight employees that wanna play.
I'm hoping.
So Timmy.
Same with me, Monica, I'll play if, if we don't have eight.
Okay.
So it's open to Dan this time, so we give him plenty of notice. And Dr. Abrego, plenty of notice, July twenty-eighth.
I'm ready.
Okay, he's ready. Okay, so we'll just.
He wants to go.
Who?
No.
So we could open it up, I'm sure Ms. Burke will play.
How's that gonna be sent out, if everybody's on vacation?
So, just, don't we send newsletters, s- uh, summer newsletters?
We could put it out there for, for, to get, uh, people interested.
Okay, just try to send out a newsletter, let them know, I know, when I was a teacher and, uh, God, what was his name, Mr. Lang would always send a, how's everything going in the summer, and.
Yep.
Let us know what was, when our first day back was, and.
Leave calls on your phone.
Calls on the phone, so stayed in contact. So, on that, so we'll let him know. And I hope everything in the summer's going good, it's, uh, seems like we're way ahead of schedule on certain things, which is a good thing, and, uh, ready to go, so does anybody else have anything to say for communication?
Relax, relax, relax.
Okay, I, I'd like to say something, um, the Adam City Wrestling Club, the high school wrestling club, is at a tournament in Florida. They, they raised, uh, money this summer for, uh, for their trip out, out there, usually it's paid for by the parents, and so, you know, it was getting kind of expensive for them to go, it's probably about twelve hundred dollars a, a piece, but, but the coach did a very good job in writing the letter to request sponsorships from people, and, you know, we kinda had, we had a golf tournament, and, uh, Mr. Rolla and I played on a team, we got one of the students from the high school, uh, golf team to play with us, and, uh, we had a lot of fun, we didn't, we didn't fare very well, but we had a lot of fun, but it wasn't about that, it was about raising money for these kids to go to that tournament. And in that letter, it's really interesting, we had seven all-academic, um, students on that wrestling team, and their average, grade point average is three point three oh. So, you know, they're, they're not, that's their average GPA, they're wrestlers, they're student athletes, but, but, you know, I always, I always talk to the coaches about, you know, these are student athletes, their first goal should be, should be being a student,